We're going to call the meeting to order at do you have six Peter?
Yeah.
Six o'clock. Okay, so review and revision of agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to change? Add? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to minutes and correspondence. Minutes. Approval of minutes from August 24th, August 28th, and January 18th. Carolyn, do you want to speak to this?
Um, well, I am not prepared to approve the minutes from the 24th or the 28th. Okay. Uh, I just think that they were, you know, they're not well done. And I was hoping that a recording could be shared with Peter. So that he, we've authorized him to review that recording and do the minutes. And I've been working on the minutes for the 28th. Uh, I've had submissions from several people and I will, I'm glad to present whatever I have at our meeting on the 24th. But I am prepared to, um, to, um, approve the minutes from January 18th. There was only one, um, one change or two changes or two questions I had bottom page. One, there is something, and I don't have the document up in front of me. I've got three devices going here, but, um, I don't have it up in front of me. And, uh, the language is billing for, S ballot mailing. And I think what was meant to be said was the ballot mailing. Peter, do you see that? You're muted, Peter.
I can find it. I'm trying to catch up with you here, but I've got the page one billing for.
Yeah, billing.
On the bottom of page one.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I'm not going to have two documents open at once right now.
Okay, so you know, it's the bottom of page one.
Right.
And, and you'll see, it's pretty obvious. And then the only other question I have is on page two, in the third paragraph, uh, under Mickey's report, uh, it said Ms. Edelman is almost the licensed teacher or something like that. Is that, does, was that meant to be, uh, Ms. Wonderly?
I would assume so.
Yeah, just a confusion of stairs.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. And that's it. So I would move approval with those two corrections.
I, I have some suggestions as well.
Okay.
On page three, the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, the third line, that begins with driven by market value, uh, properties. The comma regardless of second homes, et cetera, needs to be deleted because the CLA includes both, all homes, all sales in the town.
Okay.
It's just driven by market value of properties, period.
Um, just FYI, whenever you want me to find something, give me a word or a misspelling or something because the search is much faster than me paging through looking for the bottom of paragraph six.
Okay. Or I can actually, I can send you an email with the suggested corrections.
No need. That's fine. All I need is a key word.
All right. So I have a motion from Carolyn, um, with these changes. Do I have a second? All second, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Just I did. There's another change which is on page four. And that it is the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth paragraph down that says Ms. McDonald noted that, Mr. Parker Jennings had left a survey about the boiler. I think the survey was about the food service program, not the boiler. And suggested a review in February.
Okay, you have a.
Any comment, any comment on that? Does, I don't think we needed to have a survey about the boiler. The survey, was in relationship to the food service program.
Yep.
And the parents' interest in it.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Anything else for us?
I'm just looking down here. Um, nothing that's earth shattering. No.
Thanks for reading so closely.
Great. So, uh, Carolyn made a motion, um, all second.
I will second the motion subject to the changes suggested.
Okay. Uh, any, uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You have Crystal Corview has a hand up.
Go ahead, Crystal.
Um, just Erin Keough was waiting to be let in if somebody could let her in.
She's in.
Uh, it sounds like she's in. Mickey said she's in. So moving on to correspondence, um, I've had two correspondence that I want to discuss. I, I feel like we can just do it right here. One is Crystal Corview regarding masks, um, which I think Bill is ready to speak to. The other is from Michael Pelton with his, um, bus driving update. So let's start with Crystal. Uh, Crystal had a question about masks, um, and when maybe we can do without them. So Bill, will you speak to that, please?
Sure. I'll just give you the, the, what the, uh, Wyndham board did in August was to vote to follow the recommendations of the COVID-19 advisory memorandums. We've, uh, been doing that since school opened and, um, today, the governor and the secretary of education announced that on February 28th, uh, they would, uh, recommend that if you have 80% of eligible population of students in the school to, uh, not require masks. And they signaled that, uh, they would be giving further guidance on, uh, removing that 80% requirement, uh, in general, uh, after town meeting. So as it currently stands, uh, the school board has voted to follow the recommendation. The recommendation stands till, uh, February 28th, uh, to require masking. And on February 28th, if 80% uh, in the building, uh, have, vaccination, then, uh, to follow their requirement would be to not require masks. I do not have the most up to date, percentage of vaccinated students that are eligible at Wyndham.
Okay. So that sounds like it's when we return from, uh, winter break.
Uh, when you return from winter break, uh, the expectation is that the state will, uh, provide further guidance on, uh, not recommending masks for populations that have less than 80% vaccination rate.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that at all or?
Um, I mean, all I can tell you is my understanding is we're not anywhere near the 80%. So that's not probably going to happen. And, um, the conversation that I had had with the parent was about potentially sending a survey out. If after we get back, the state hasn't done anything, just to check in with some of the families or all the families to see if that's something that they are interested in doing.
Okay.
Or not. So, you know, we'll be back here after the first of March. We'll see if the state has said anything new. If not, maybe by the end of that week, we can put together a survey and check in with all the families and see what people think.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for being on that. Um, Crystal, does that sound, uh, does that sound like we've answered your concerns so far?
Um, so I just want to point out that I did watch the press conference today. Um, and I'm hoping that after break, we can take a serious look at this because honestly, if people were gonna get vaccinated, they'd be vaccinated by now. Um, a lot of the vaccination clinics that are happening at Leland and Gray, they're going to be stopping doing those because people aren't showing up. Um, and it's just, it's, it's not right that, you know, our children that did get vaccinated have to stay in a mask because we're not 80%. Because I'm sorry, if these parents have not gotten their children vaccinated yet, then they're probably not going to. I have no problem with them not being vaccinated. I feel it's a person's choice. If you want to get vaccinated, do it. If you don't, by all means, don't. But this mask thing is destroying our children. They need to see their teachers' faces. They, it's socially and emotionally draining their souls. So I don't expect anything to happen before break. But after break, like, I really hope we look at this because it's not fair that we are expected to wait on 80% of our school population to be vaccinated. Because again, if they're not vaccinated yet, they are probably not going to.
Okay.
You have a hand from Bridget Blanchard?
Uh, go ahead, Bridget.
Um, can you define the term vaccinated for children? Are they two shots or three shots?
Two shots.
Sorry, what was that?
Two.
Two shots, okay. Yeah, I'm right in the same boat as Crystal. I, I don't see one reason for these to be a mask anymore.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing up the question. Um, these are your children that are in this school. So, um, it sounds like Mickey's on it and, uh, Bill's on it. And we're just going to continue to listen to what you have to say. And, uh, hopefully by the beginning of March, we can, uh, find some, some better information. Um, and if it comes to where we need to hold a special meeting before the next, um, March school board meeting, then we can do that. So understand I'm, I'm completely on board with, with trying to figure out what's going to work best for you and your children. Um, for right now, if we can just wait until the beginning of March and then hope, uh, that maybe things turn our way. Um, and if not, then we'll schedule a special meeting, go from there. And I think the survey is a great idea. So thank you, Mickey, for doing that.
Uh, you have a hand from Crystal Corview?
Crystal, go ahead.
And I also just want to point out that, um, my little one, Oliver, he is starting to complain a lot that he has a hard time understanding Sarah when she's in a mask. So I also think it would be better, like, from the learning standpoint, like, the teachers can effectively talk to the students and the students can understand what they're saying.
Yep.
Uh, you have a hand from Russ coming?
Russ.
Yeah, I wanted to, Madam Chair, ask if we can review, um, revisions to the agenda. There are two items that I think need to be added. One of them under old business is the boiler. Because on the page three of the minutes from the January 18th meeting, you made reference of a discussion for the, in the February meeting about the boiler and Mr. Frost and the gas, um, sniffer that might be needed. But that's not on the agenda at this time. And the other thing is a discussion under the pay orders of reimbursing the town for the vote of the school choice votes, the, the two, um, mailings that were sent out for the vote. Um, I know Kathy is both the town treasurer and the school treasurer. And Mike McLean has confirmed that those invoices have been sent over. And I'm wondering why they don't appear as a pay order item.
Sure, we can, yep, yeah, we can absolutely discuss both of them. I, yep. Can we get through minutes and correspondence? Okay, so, uh, so we're working on the mask mandates. Um, the other correspondence I had was from Michael Pelton, which I had, uh, sent a message to the superintendent regarding what needs to happen next for him. He responded to that. I forwarded to Mike. So, uh, is there any question about that, Mike Pelton?
No, I believe we're pretty well all set. Uh, as a substitute, I've already had my fingerprints and have been cleared for all that. So we'll just have to work on the quote unquote hiring process. Um, and I already have my medical stuff taken care of. The only thing, I guess there's one question I do have is that, um, for commercial, uh, freight hauling, you're required to have a drug test. So I'm wondering if there is an additional drug test that I need to have. Um, I did have one approximately a month and a half ago for the school that I attended. But when I attended, they said the most places do a first hire drug test. So I'm just wondering if that's part of the process as well, if that's something that maybe we missed along the way.
I have not hired a bus driver. We contract with other, uh, companies. So, uh, I don't believe we have a process for drug testing substitute bus drivers. But if the Wyndham School District, as the employer, would like that to occur, I can look into making that happen.
Great. Does that sound reasonable?
Yep, I'm pretty sure we're all set. We can figure it out via email. No worries.
Great. All right. Thank you, Michael, for doing that. Um, it'll be nice to have a backup bus driver.
You've got three hands, Russ, Carolyn, Abby.
Russ.
I forgot to take my hand down. I'm sorry. Let me go find this little button over here.
All right, Carolyn.
Yeah, regarding, um, the bus driving and as a substitute, I've never really had a hiring contract with, you know, with the school. I was just, I made myself available. I'm on a list and, um, and they do spot, uh, drug testing. So you just never quite know when you might be tested, uh, which is an obvious thing. Um, so, um, I, I guess, I guess Bill can check in with, you know, to see if you need to be drug tested now at the very beginning. But typically, they, um, they're more interested in spot checking folks.
And Mike, you can just follow up with me and we'll, uh, we'll make sure that whatever we need to do, I think it's just making sure that we have your tax form so that you can get paid and well, and then I'll.
No worries. Yeah. Yep, no worries. We'll figure it out. And I'll, I'll just send you what I have too. Maybe that'll qualify as sufficient for the time anyway, but I'm sure we can figure it out. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
The mailings. For the vote, Mom?
Are we waiting on another hand?
Sorry, is there another hand?
Abby Pelton.
All right, Abby.
Well, hello. Um, I just wanted to, uh, kind of, uh, give a little shout out to Michael because that was, um, he started working on that this fall. And between going to the school, getting all the stuff done, there's a lot to it. Um, and that was something that, you know, we had heard as a concern from the families, um, when the school year started, of, out of a lot of respect for Cord and, you know, his, his inability to take time off. Um, so I think it's wonderful that that has been filled. But if there is anyone else who is interested in like doing that, be aware it is a process. And, um, you know, it's, it's something that takes a lot, a lot of work. So, um, that's all. Thank you very much. And thank you, Michael.
You've got another hand with Carolyn Partridge.
Carolyn.
Thanks, Abby.
Yeah, I, I just want to take a moment and really thank Michael for what he did. I, we've sort of thanked him online, but, um, I, I've helped to train any number of bus drivers. And I know it's sometimes an agonizing process. And I will say that Michael just took this on basically on his own. He did get help from Cord in terms of practice and, and going for the testing. But I want kudos to Michael. He did a great job and he was very self-directed. So yay, Michael.
Thank you. Okay, unless there's any other hands, which I'm sorry, I can't see.
There are no more hands, Madam Chair.
So we're going to move on to bills and pay orders. Um, I'm sorry, I did not, uh, get them sent out. I can tell you, there are three, Pay Order 24, 25, 26, 24 and 25 are for payroll. 26 is, and you should all be getting these, or at least I know Russ is getting these. Uh, First Light Fiber, Green Mountain Backflow Testing, H2O, Guy Environmental Services, I-Sun Grafted Nature Museum, Allen Partridge Quill Paper, uh, Napa, The Little School. This one, I had a question for Veep, V-E-E-P Windworks.
Yep, that's the, um, gentleman Julian Leon who comes here to do science with the kids from Veep.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Okay, Julian Leon. And then VHE Health, and then our payment to the Central Supervisory Union. So they look fine to me. Um, so I'll take a motion.
You have a hand, uh, from Mr. Russ coming.
Russ.
I, I've reviewed all of the previous pay orders and they're all in order. I can't see anything on there that I could question. If you, once one reads through the descriptions, they're self-explanatory. So I would, I would make a motion to accept 24, 25, and 26.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 As far as, I just spoke briefly with Kathy Scott, the treasurer, about the, uh, your question, Russ, about the, um, mailing, uh, mailings for the town. She's saying that's something you need to discuss with the town clerk. So it, she says, if you have any questions, you need to call her directly. It seems like it's, uh, we're all playing phone tag here. So, um, so if you want to contact Kathy Scott about that, uh, that would probably be the best course of action. Otherwise.
I will carry.
Okay, great. Great. If we're done with that, moving on to principal's report.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. Our big audience member. Thank you, Jim, for being here. Good to see you. With the winter benchmark testing period over, Sarah and Mr. PJ met with the members of the AST team to determine some interventions for students that are below the 50th percentile in either math or language arts. Those students will get some extra remediation to help bolster the area they are struggling in. This extra time can come during class time with a small group or one-on-one time during skills block after lunch recess. The next six weeks or so will be implementing these interventions in anticipation of progress monitoring, which will be resuming again in March. Mr. PJ received an email from a former student a couple of weeks ago. That really helps to exemplify the end results we're working towards with all our students here in Wyndham. Just because we are small does not mean our students can't accomplish big things. Here are some excerpts from the email he received. Quote, "I found out today that I got into Yale Nursing School with a specialty in nurse midwifery. I have such distinct memories of you encouraging our class to think big and reach for those Ivy League schools. And somehow it worked for me. Feel free to tell the young Wyndamites that even kids from small towns can get into big schools." End quote. Getting an email like this from a former student who graduated over a decade ago is one big reason why this job is so rewarding and fulfilling. This is one of three former graduates that I know about who have gone into nursing after attending Wyndham Elementary. As a result of working with the AST group last month, we have obtained a new online reading program called Read Live. With this program, students can do a cold read of a short story, which means they just read it without any preparation. Then they can listen to the story three times and follow along it as is read to them. So the student can gain familiarity with the story and practice the words they struggle with during the first cold reading. Finally, the student can do three more readings of the story to see how much they can improve from the first reading. This program is in use in the other elementary schools and was introduced to us by Melissa Wood. So thank you, Melissa. Sarah and Mr. PJ continue to work with the Special Education Department and the AST team to best meet the individual needs of our students. This month, we have several meetings with the Special Education Team for EST meetings on various students. EST standing for Educational Support Team. And by working together, we're hoping to come up with the best individualized plan and success for every student that is in need. Monday, January 24th, was an in-service day for both Sarah and Mr. PJ, working with the Keys to Literacy Program. The focus of the day was on summary writing and planning for activities to be used during our language arts block. Tuesday, January 25th, was the report card day for the Supervisory Union. Mr. PJ and Sarah met to work together on the student report cards so that the most complete reporting could be done for our families. Report cards went home with the students Friday, January 28th. I received feedback from a parent at JISP who said that one Lyft operator said to them unsolicited as they were waiting in line that, quote, "The Wyndham kids are the happiest ones who come here for JISP," end quote. No surprise there. Some of you may recall, several years back, on a picture day, we realized that there had been a break-in at the school, specifically into the principal's office. And over $1,300 had been stolen from the locked desk drawer. That money had been raised at a particularly well-attended and generously donated pasta supper and raffle the night before. Many months after the theft, the perpetrator was caught and fessed up to having stole the money. We then received a restitution letter from the state saying we would eventually begin receiving small payments to replenish those funds. After recently checking in about that, I'm happy to report that we have received $987.50 so far. That will be added to our revenue for this year. I double-checked with Lori Garland, who made sure that that was accurate. So that's very exciting news. We've gotten almost $1,000 of that money back about four years later.
Nice.
Greg Frost was here last month to look at the flooring in the all-purpose room and some other areas in the school. Thankfully, the flooring in here, we're not in here because we're not there. Just for those of you that are wondering where we are, we're in Miss Sarah's classroom today because of Troy Wonderly's circus equipment is all set up in the all-purpose room. It's all around and we didn't want to mess with it. So that's why we're in this room. So it's really not in here. When I say in here, it's in there. So that flooring can now easily be removed and replaced without a lot of hassle. So thank you, Greg. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the principal?
Abby Pelton has a hand.
Abby.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. PJ. And thank you for sharing, um, the letter that you got from the student. Um, as many of us have, if you didn't already know, you know, nurses are heroes. You should hopefully have seen a bunch of signs telling you so if you didn't know that. Um, so that's really cool to know that students, um, that attended our school have, have become heroes. Um, and that's gotta, that makes me feel good as a parent, knowing you are receiving feedback. Um, that really can hit you in the feels in a good way. So, um, thank you so much for all that you do. And thank you for, for sharing that with us.
Thanks, Abby.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before we move on to the.
You have no more hands.
Okay, Bill, you're up.
Um, so, uh, updating you all, I know Wyndham's interested in intra-SU choice. I sent out an email to all board members, uh, to try to keep you up to date because it's a timely issue. The attorney, our WCSU attorney is working with the language that was approved by the boards, uh, working with the AOE attorney and the finance director. It is not a go and it's not a no-go. It's a, how, what is the path that, uh, can make the ADM stay with the homeschool while still being allowed to provide education outside of the district? Uh, very similar to what happens when you have a student, um, leave for special education needs. How do we construct that in the legal ways that pass through the statute that matches the public high school choice? So, um, they are working on that. I am not sure whether that will be done in time to implement that system uh, in April of this year for next year. But, um, I am in contact with our attorney about every three or four days to see on the progress. And, uh, I will continue to update the board in between meetings. And, uh, like Beth said, if there is a timely thing that we need to do something special on, I will update the board on that. Kathy, uh, Scott has her hand up.
Kathy.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I'm asking a question of Russ coming. Um, there was a question about ballots, I understand. Something I was supposed to do that I didn't do. What is that? Uh, Russ, are you on? I think it's about the mailing.
My, my, I had to unmute my microphone. Apparently, Mike McLean has sent a bill over to the town from the town to the school board for the ballots that were mailed out for the two elections. And it has not appeared on any of the pay orders that I have reviewed.
I will look into that. I, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but I, I mean, I do know what you're talking about. But I will look into that. Thank you. That's the clarification.
Thank you. It's the third time I've asked for it.
Yeah, it's my understanding, Russ, that the pay orders though come from the, the central office. So, um, it sounds like there's a number of people involved here. So, um, I guess we need to reach out to the central office also. And that's certainly something I can, uh, add to, to my list tomorrow. I can contact, um, the person who sends out the pay orders. So I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, because Michael tells me he submitted both of the bills.
Yeah, so he said, she said. So, all right, if we're done, so you, any questions for Bill? Okay, hearing none. We're moving on. If you wanted to, you lost your chance.
You got a hand, Crystal Corview.
Sorry, Crystal, go ahead. I was just kidding. Sorry, Crystal, go ahead. I was just kidding.
Sorry, I was a little slow. I'm raw.
I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Bill, my question is for you. Isn't there an at-large board seat that is supposed to be voted on?
There is, and it is on the ballot for the 23rd. It's on the West River ballot.
Oh, it's, so it's not going to be on the town ballot?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You bet. Um, Beth, I did have one more thing.
Sure.
Mr. Parker Jennings failed in his report to share the ending of the boys' basketball game, and I think it is important that that be shared.
All right, share it. Go.
Jeez. So at the Hoops for Hope this past Saturday, which is a big day for the Leland and Gray Boys Basketball Team, because it's a big fundraiser and they get usually the largest crowd of the season there. And they're playing against Green Mountain, which you could claim is a rival tool, being so close. And so it's Saturday's game, the boys' basketball team, who has struggled quite a bit, unfortunately, this season, had a really close game going with Green Mountain, and it was back and forth and back and forth. They were down six points with less than two minutes to go, and they managed to hold Green Mountain without another point and close that gap so that Alex Parker Jennings was fouled with 1.7 seconds left in the game with Leland and Gray down by one. He went to the foul line to shoot a one-and-one, which means he's got to make the first shot in order to get.
The Leland and Gray Boys, they were going to lose by one point. His kid got fouled.
Oh.
And he made the two free shots too.
Oh.
Crystal, I think you're telling the story before Mickey.
Thank you, though, but that's perfect. It's, you nailed it on the money. He hit both foul shots.
Sorry, Timmy was asked.
Yeah.
That's okay. You did a better job than I would anyway, Crystal. So Alex hit the two free throws and they won the game by one point, and it was super exciting. Thank you, Bill, for letting me share that.
That's very nice. Yeah, thank you, Bill, for remembering that. Okay, any other questions for Bill before we move on to old business?
You have no more hands up, Madam Chair.
All right, old business, we're going to adopt some policies here. Um, I can, there's a bunch. Uh, C11.
Do you want me to make a motion, Beth?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, and we can do these all at once, Bill?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I move that we adopt polis, the following policies. C11, Student Freedom of Expression. C12, Prevention of Sexual Harassment as prohibited by Title IX. C29, Wyndham Equity Policy. D1, Proficiency-Based Graduation Requirements. D3, Responsible Computer Internet and Network Use. D4, Title I Comparability. D5, Animal Dissection. And D6, Class Size Policy.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn. Can I get a second?
I'll just move second.
Thank you. Russ, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Great. Motion passes. Okay, next on old business, we have a report from Bridget Corby on school meals.
Do you want me to jump in and talk about, um, Hunger, Hunger Free Vermont?
Yeah, everything that you've been working on. Absolutely. We'd like to hear about it.
Okay, great. So Grayson's going to help me on this one. So I reached out to Hunger Free Vermont and spoke to, um, two people that work there, and they were super helpful and kind of shared some of the challenges that Wyndham has and, um, just where we are with the fact that we don't have a lunch program and that, that's something that some families would like, and we don't have a kitchen. Basically, the way they put it is they're sort of like a free consultant group for us here, um, if we were to work with them. It's Mr. PJ's right there. So, see, he's leaving it. Yeah. So if we, if we chose to work with them, they would be able to kind of give us some ideas on cost-effective ways to start a program, um, look at some of the challenges they use. I don't know if anybody's familiar with Green Street in Brattleboro, but they're another school that doesn't actually have a kitchen, um, at all, and they managed to have a food program for a lot more students than we have. Um, it's cooked at another school. They've used a closet and they've kind of turned it into, um, you know, like a way to warm the food up. One of the things that we have as a challenge in Wyndham that we all know is there's a lot of upfront costs to start something. And they would be really helpful in helping us find grants. One of the things that they said that most people don't realize are that grocery stores are a great resource for, for grants, especially for schools. When you look at the larger chains, they use, um, Shaw's and Hannaford's are really big in Vermont. And so if you go to their corporate offices, they have to have so many, I'm getting a haircut over here apparently, so many, uh, grants that they spend a year, and they love to spend it on school. So we need the upfront money to start a program and then the funding after to keep it going. I think one of the challenges that we have is that we have to be a part of a food program of the, um, the federally-run food program in order to get grants. But if we look at private grants ahead of time, we might be able to get something started. So there's a lot more to it, and they'd be willing to, to kind of get involved with the school and, you know, they want us to talk to possibly Lori and someone at, if we were to work with Leland and Gray, um, someone in their food services down there to see what our restrictions were. But I just think that if we're going to explore, if we're going to explore the, the concept of starting some sort of a food program, it would be worth it for us to talk to them because I think that they'd be able to point us in the right directions.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Chair, you have a hand up from Mr. Cumming.
Oh, go ahead, Russ.
I think it boils down to what Lori had said earlier this, um, last year, is that in order to get a food program going, you need to have the basics at Wyndham Elementary School to keep the food warm and to serve it. And we have a surplus in our budget, could be $25,000, $30,000, $40,000. And we could initiate spending some of that surplus money to building out the necessary physical structure to allow a food service program to be instituted at Wyndham Elementary School. It's a matter of, you have to have the basics, and it's, it's the rules and regulations we have to live by. And the amount of food or the kind of food that we get has to meet certain standards. And it's not something that we can do on our own. We need professional help from the kitchen down there at Leland and Gray to meet those reporting standards. And it's just a matter of getting some of the surplus money allocated towards building out a kitchen or some facility that would meet the minimal requirements to get the food service program going. And then the ongoing funding in future years can be funded by Hannaford's or Shaw's or whatever, um, sources you want to try to tap to reduce the cost to the parents. But there's certain rules and regulations you have to follow in order to give the kids food.
Bridget Corby has her hand up.
Go ahead, Bridget.
So I, you are correct, and I think that the challenge is, is that in order to, um, get started, there's some upfront costs. The benefit to Hunger Free Vermont is where they're, they can help us, is they can help us find ways to fund that without all of it being out of our pocket. Um, and so the, the private grants, those are grants that we'd be able to get beforehand. And so maybe it doesn't cover everything. It depends on what we'd be eligible for and that sort of a thing. But I think that there are funds out there that we could be using before we actually look at the town paying for it, which would be super helpful. The other thing that they did say is that, and, you know, some of you might have more information on this than I do, there are, there are bills out there trying to be passed to get free food, free meals to all kids in schools in Vermont. The challenge of that is the way it's being written, is we might be required to have a lunch program if that were the case. So I think that it would be smart for Wyndham to be looking at this ahead of time. Um, so I, I do, I, yes, there's an upfront cost, but I do think that there are options out there for, for us to find private grants before we have to look at, um, us paying for it.
Great. Um, Bridget, thank you. I'm really encouraged. Um, first of all, thank you for, for starting this and, and really getting involved with it. I'm really encouraged to hear, Green Street School is a, it's a pretty big elementary school in Brattleboro, and I know a couple of teachers that work there. One, I think, had her students here at Wyndham. So I, I think we have some connections there that I would certainly like to, um, make some sort of connection, have a meeting with them maybe to see how they started, um, and go from there. Does that sound like, it's certainly something I can call about to get started, but obviously you're the one that's taking this on. So, um, can I, can I tag team with you on this and see what we can do to move forward?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I think that, um, I think they also work with Hunger Free, Hunger Free Vermont. So I think, um, definitely someone else beside me, besides me talking to them would be really helpful. Um, maybe someone that's more of a decision maker and can kind of work from there. But, um, yeah, Green Street was the first example that Tim had given me as, as kind of a big success. Because I think it's like 300 kids at the school that they're, they're feeding, um, and they're making the food at one of their neighboring elementary schools in Brattleboro.
Okay.
And bringing the food over. So, so they're, they're doing it.
Great. No, that's dynamite. That's really good to hear. Um, I really feel like this discussion about bringing lunch program into the school has progressed far more than it has i- in the past. So I appreciate your work and all the other parents who have been on this. So, um.
You have a hand from Abby Pelton?
Abby Pelton.
I'm just gonna echo your praises, Beth. Uh, Bridget is a rock star. Thank you, Bridget. She is amazing. We super appreciate her and just want to let everyone know that, you know, you're slaying the girl. We're proud of you. Thank you very much.
All right, Bridget, I'm gonna take, um, I'm gonna call Green Street School and see what I can find out from them, and then I will let you know. So maybe you could take a couple of days just to stand down and, uh, take a break because I'm sure you need it, Mama. It's, it looks like you have somebody that wants to do your hair, so.
I, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Russ.
On, um, page four of the minutes from the January 18th school board meeting, um, Beth, you had mentioned that Mickey Parker Jennings had left the survey, and we discussed it, I assume it was about the food service program. I haven't seen the results of that survey. Um, I'm wondering if Mickey can share what he received from the results of the survey.
I do not have those results with me at the moment. Beth's looking in her folder to see if she's got them from last time.
Food service. Oh, okay. Can I mention, you know, the food service, uh, the food survey is in the tiniest print I've ever seen in my life, so I am going to hand it to you because I can barely see it as it is.
All right, so from what I gather, uh, we had 11 families in the school community currently. Nine of those 11 families responded in some way or another on the survey. As far as a full day, 975 per day, we got seven noes, two yeses. There was also a homeschool family represented as well. As far as potentially being interested in just lunch for $5.75, we had six yeses and three noes. The ability to help transport, we had three yeses and six noes. As far as Mr. PJ making breakfast, we had five yeses and four noes. We also checked in terms of just checking about, um, which families planned to be here next year. Seven of them said yes, two of them said no. And we also checked about interest in school choice option just to get that going as well, even though that may not be an option, Bill says, but if it is, we've got seven noes and two yeses. So that was the feedback that we got on the food survey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair, you do not have any more questions.
Okay, so any other questions for Bridget? I feel like Bridget, you were really thorough, but I just want to make that, uh, just in case anybody else has something they want to add. Okay. Thank you, Bridget. Um, let's move on then to, uh, new business information regarding the FY 2023 budget.
Who's that coming from?
I have no idea.
Lori's not, Lori's not here.
Yeah, so you left this slot in case, uh, people had any follow-up questions. You guys had an unbelievably thorough conversation at your last board meeting, so I wouldn't expect a lot, but, um, you also did have a request to, um, have Lori look into, um, what would it look like if you had a non-operational this year under all the same financial, um, situations? And what would it look like to have an operational so that you had that, uh, data available for, um, citizens as they prepare to vote?
Yep, and we got those, um, non-operational and operational. Um, the non-operational is just a smidge higher. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that.
Russell would like to speak to it.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm referring to the same documents, these are the two documents that Carolyn had requested from Lori Garland last week.
Yep.
One of them is labeled non-operational budget with a cost of $2.022. And the other one is a 2023 proposed budget approved by the board at a cost of $1.983. Are these the two budgets in question?
Yep.
Okay, I would just like to point out, because I am on the other side of the fence, that, um, under the proposed, uh, budget, um, for the operational school, there's no school lunch. There's no art. There's no music. There's no world languages. There's no school nurse, no school, um, social worker, and no sports teams. And for four cents more, um, for the non-operational budget, what do you get? Well, for four cents, you get school lunches. That's pretty cheap. You get art classes, you get music, you get world languages, you get sports teams, you get a school nurse and a school social worker. So for four cents, you seem to be getting a lot of benefit. And I know that many of you don't agree with me, but I'm interested in what's best for the children of Wyndham. And if it costs me four cents or five cents or 10 cents more to get school lunches, art classes, music, world languages, sports teams, school nurse, I'm willing to pay it. And I think there are a lot of other people in Wyndham like me who are willing to pay more to get more benefits for our children in Wyndham, and I throw this open for a discussion.
Thank you, Russ. Um, we will have these documents at our informational meeting. Um, Bill, I'm curious, does a non-operational budget, does that include transportation?
It's what Lori's, it's what Lori's.
I'm sorry, Russ, I'm speaking to Bill right now. Can you just please let him answer that question? I just want to clarify. Because Lori has been out, so it was a question I had. Does a non-operational budget include transportation?
I did not have that conversation with Lori, and it is not on the document, so I can't answer.
Okay, so that's something we need to look into. Russ, I appreciate, um, how you feel about this. You've made it very clear over the years, your, um, your, your feelings of Wyndham Elementary School. Um, but these are two documents that we just received recently. Um, I do think that they should be shared with the other people in town, and it's something that we will have. I don't know if Peter, you can take a screenshot of these, um, but we will have them for the informational meeting.
You have three other hands on deck. Uh, you've got, uh, Michael Pelton, Carolyn Partridge, Abby Pelton, and, and then Aaron Keighley.
All right, great. Let's go in that order then.
Michael, you are up.
Um, all right. Well, the first thing that I have to say is, uh, I don't believe that this is a conversation regarding whether we're keeping the school open and running as an operational school or a non-operational school, so I guess it's sort of a moot point. That being said, um, I think it's important that we look at ways to, um, reduce our costs as a town. And I believe Russ, as a Lister, has some, uh, interesting perspective. Uh, he's pretty familiar with the CLA. And I'm curious if, um, there are other ways that we can look at reducing costs for the school as a whole. For instance, um, if the school, for instance, didn't own the property and the town did, would that change how things look on? For instance, if the school, for instance, didn't own the property and the town did, would that change how things look on paper? Would that reduce our cost per pupil? Would that change the way things are taxed? Ie, you could also include, I suppose, the bus, things like that, I guess. Is are there ways that we could look at this sort of out of the box to reduce the cost for the school to operate? And the reason I say that is I'm probably not entirely accurate, but it looks like to me that basically for every dollar that we spend on our school locally, we're also sending money to the state. So if we reduce the amount that we're spending on our doll at home, we're saving the extra dollar that we're spending to the state or sending to the state. So I'm wondering if there are ways that we can look at this sort of out of the box in a different way to reduce our costs.
I can speak to some of those questions, Michael. Anything that's related to the school, whether it's the operation of the building, the heat, the electricity, whatever it is, cannot be shifted to the town budget. It has to be included in the school's budget, the same as with the school bus operation. The operation of the bus, the paying the driver, the diesel fuel, whatever it is, all has to be in the school budget. You cannot shift selected items from the school budget to the town budget to simply reduce your taxes. It's not allowed in the statutes. And it's very clear what can be done is if you have a volunteer program to teach cross country skiing or downhill skiing, you can do fundraising for that. But if it's something directly related to instruction, whether it's art or music or whatever it is, it has to be included in the in the school budget.
Okay, Michael, unless, did you have anything else or?
Yeah, I have one more, one more piece. I think that it's important to recognize that as Russ is pointing out, we don't have a food program, and there are other things that we don't include in our school in the budget. But I think it's also important to recognize other programs that we are doing at the school that other schools are not participating in or don't have the ability to participate in. For instance, this week, the entire week, the kids are participating in circus extravaganza, if you will. That's not something that's going to be happening everywhere. I think it's important to recognize that there are things that our school is doing much better. And they're including into our curriculum that other people just aren't experiencing. So we do have some shortfalls perhaps, but we also have some great benefits as a small school.
We've got a long list, so if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'm just gonna go to the next person and keep doing that and let you run the meeting, but I'll just move on as the person finishes. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Michael.
All right, Carolyn Partridge.
Well, thank you, Bill. I I I'm going to I'm going to add to what Michael just said in that yes, we can't, and what Russ said, we can't shift costs. And if you want to look at a model for how this that transferring the school to the town might work, you could look at the town of Grafton, but they have to pay for all of the expenses involved. And I also want to agree with Michael. You know, Russ made a list of things that we, you know, he says we don't provide, and I would just disagree with a lot of them. We don't have, you know, boilerplate music, art, and what have you. However, we do have music and we have ukulele lessons and now recorder lessons. We have art projects. The kids do ceramics. And we have a partnership with the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center where the kids go and examine exhibits and do hands on art projects. We have had artists in residence even during the pandemic. We have Kiwi kits. We are participating with the Meadows B program, which allows the kids to learn blacksmithing. And they did sewing projects and community members have come in to teach weaving, felting, spinning, and painting. There are student performances that don't happen at other schools. We've had residencies with Sarah Peck and Kate Kelly. The kids go to the Weston Playhouse and learn stagecraft and 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 learn from Broadway professionals. And I'll point out that the stars of the Leland and Gray production, Mamma Mia, were Mary McDonald and Luca Posey. And there were other students like Abe Newton, who is not, I mean, he, the one year he did come to school and was at Wyndham, and he was in the music area, and so was Davin. He was part of the backstage crew. We have the farm program, which I know some of you don't think is is necessary, but I, everything I hear about what the kids have to say is that they love it. We have a nature program that's taught by Sally Newton. I understand also that we've been having some language programs where the kids are learning Chinese and French. And, you know, we could look into what they teach at at Floodbrook, for instance, but my understanding is that it is really, it's it's a kind of it's they teach French, but it's part of a greater program of, you know, a bigger program. So at any rate, I think that when you, if you're going to make an argument like Russ is trying to make about some kind of lacking that we have at our school, I think that there's there's a lot that we do have. And if we were to go to a non operational school, we'd have to take into consideration the cost to the students of not being able to have those experiences. There are a bunch I haven't mentioned. I don't know if we've been able to start Starbase again or do the field trips that we typically do. But I I think that to be really honest and accurate, we need to take into consideration all of those things that our kids get to do. And and not only that, but the social emotional attention that they get is is amazing. And I don't think they get the same attention from the same loving staff that they get at Wyndham. So what's the cost associated with those things? I think, and I don't believe that any additional transportation was taken into consideration with the non operational estimate. So I think it would be a lot higher. And, you know, we wouldn't have the same sense of community. So that's my two cents for now.
Abby Pelton?
Thank you. Well, keeping with my theme of appreciation, Russ, thank you so much for for sharing that. Just to make everyone aware, there is a stellar undertaking on fundraising that is is being drafted with a plan on how we can best acquire funds in various ways. So I'm very happy to hear, Russ, that you and friends of yours are eager to financially support that. So I will make sure that you are copied on all of every fundraiser that is in the pipeline, and I hope that you do share that with your friends. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Abby.
Erin Keough?
Thank you for requesting the comparison of budgets. It'd be interesting to look at more more deeply and depth. Bill, do you know if those budgets for the non operational and the operational budget were with all the assumptions that were put in there before? That's my first question.
I do not know, but based on the comparison that is laid out and the request that was made, my assumption, and I'll just say my assumption, is the what was approved on the 18th of January was then turned into a non operational.
If I could just interject real quick, Erin, for you, I'm looking at the document. It says tax calculation with assumptions. Peter, are you able to get a screenshot of this or? I don't know. I'm sorry. We just got these and we can get them out.
Well, I don't think we can fully see that clearly, but I'll just go ahead with my question.
Have it sent out. Thank you.
Would be, you know, just again, for comparison, if that assumption budget also has the five phantom students that were budgeted for, then of course that would make that just a smidge higher or smidge lower if that was was taken out. So that would be my my first question there, just for knowledge. Second thing to go back to Michael's statement, is there a way to look at changing some of the the budgetary items around, whether cutting some budgets in in certain areas, you know, without taking a full deep dive into it, and to maybe move some of that money from one one aspect to add things to like an art program? I understand that we do have volunteers, but what happens if those volunteers don't want to volunteer anymore? That becomes an issue. So that's my stance on that one. So it's should there be something budgeted for an art group program, a music program? And then back to Carolyn's, I'm saying that other schools don't have the same things as Wyndham. No, not always, but they do have a lot of those same aspects like the Weston Play Group. They go to different town events and do the same things. They may not have the ceramics and blacksmithing, but I'm pretty sure that's open to other schools if they wanted to do it. So there are a lot of similar opportunities. And even just recently, there was an article for out for Floodbrook from, they lost their music teacher and all the all the musicians from Burn Burton came up and now are teaching the kids at Floodbrook how to play guitar, drums, all these different musical instruments. So and I think that's great, you know, definitely in our in our community, and that's part of it as well. So being able to reach out into other schools would be great too, whether to share some of that budget. That's it.
Thank you, Erin. Next up is Crystal Corview.
Thank you. I just want to kind of touch on, you know, I think the school does do a lot of great things. But it was disheartening at the meeting where we went through the budget and we said, you know, if we leave all this stuff in, it's going to be $2 and something. And we sat there and we listened to everything we asked for, get cut, including the lunch program, which was a pretty big deal to some of us. So I get that, you know, it's four cents higher for non operational. And I get that we have volunteers that do music and such. But, you know, if something were to happen and those volunteers weren't available, then you're left with we can't do it until we can find another volunteer. So I do think it's a better bet to have somebody that is a paid person to teach these things. And I just wanted to touch on the circus program. All the schools in the area do the circus programs. Troy goes around to each school. He spends a week there. You know, my kids have gone to Townsend. They go to the museum down in Brattleboro. So a lot of these things that people think are specific to Wyndham, although they're great, they aren't just specific to Wyndham. And us parents that did a year or two years at Townsend, we know this. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Bill, who's next?
Thank you, Crystal. Next up is Howard Ayers.
Hey, I just wanted to thank Russ for not trying to make this decision simply on a nickel and dime basis on our tax rate. There's a lot more to it. However, I have to strongly disagree with his contention that other schools in the area offer more than our our school does. I have traveled the world and I've traveled the country and I've sold three kids to Wyndham Elementary. And they have had an awesome education. They have certainly competed well and had an equal education to any kid going to any other school in this district. Being a single parent here, it's not, it was not easy raising three kids. If you haven't had the experience of raising kids in Vermont through the winter, it may not be obvious to you that it's not easy getting from one place to another when the roads are icy and frozen. And maybe you don't have enough money to gas your car up, or you don't have great tires. Having a school in town, there's an intangible benefit. You can't put a price on for the families. When things are tough for Wyndham families who have kids, that school is there for them. That school's been there for my kids. In fact, my kids are looking to buy property in Wyndham right now and can't find anything because there are no houses available. So so Bravo for not nickel and diming this question. The other thing I want to say is 20 years' experience of in the school system is we in Wyndham run a really economical operation. There are no big cuts that you're going to make to save big money. The cost of educating our kids are in line with the cost of other schools in Vermont. There's no big savings to be had one way or another, whatever you do. The funding system for education in Vermont is so Rube Goldberg, it's so convoluted. There is no way to predict what your costs are going to be next year. It could be because somebody sells a house for a couple hundred thousand dollars extra, could be because a family moves in or a family moves out. These variables are not our fault. They are the fault of the state funding system. And I I hope to God that the state gets it together and comes up with a more stable way of funding our schools because it's 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 not a healthy situation. However, you can't, you know, we have to live with it. And whether we have a school or not, these variables are still going to be there. There's still going to be huge swings in tax rates depending upon which way the wind blows in Montpelier. So to finish up, I just want to say it's fantastic that we still have a school here. These kids are getting the best education a kid could possibly get, and parents are getting the most support parents could possibly get from a school. Thank you.
Thank you, Howie. We have Carolyn Partridge up next.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to take a moment to point out that the tax rate would be, what, $1.68, something like that, if it were not for the CLA. We had this precipitous drop in the CLA common level of appraisal from 97% down to 83%. And that is, that's just what raised the tax rate, you know, 30 cents per hundred. So this is, that is definitely a problem. And my understanding is that the town will will go through a reappraisal because we've dropped below 85, 85%. So just keep in mind that the tax rate would be much lower if it were not for that CLA issue.
Madam Chair, you have a.
Okay. So there's obviously a lot to talk about. I gotta be honest, you know, anybody that's happy to pay, you know, four cents more for the operation, for the non operational budget, I wish we could work towards making that for our operational budget. And I really think that that needs to be something that you take into consideration by talking to every single parent who has children in this school, for or against. So Russ, the fact that you're looking to pay a little bit more, why can't we have that conversation to pay a little bit more for our school then? I think that's something to 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 move forward with. So we're going to have an informational meeting next Thursday at 6 o'clock, and we can further this. I will make sure to get these two documents from Lori Garland out to Ellen McDuffie, out to all the community for you to see it. You, we will need to be clear whether the non operational budget includes transportation. So there's a number of questions to this. Please be very careful about the information you share, and I express that implicitly to the board members. You are both still representatives of this board supporting this school. I don't know anybody that joins a board not to support an organization. That seems kind of bizarre to me. It seems to me like you join a board to support it. It seems to me like you join a board to support it. But that may be just me. So unless there's any other questions about the budget, we can move on to public comment opportunity, or sorry, to other business discussing the boiler. Anything?
Great. I do not have an update from Greg Frost on the boiler at this time.
Great, then that's going to be pushed to March. Public comment opportunity.
You have a hand from Crystal Corview.
Crystal Corview.
I'm wondering if the information for the West River Board meetings can be sent to our town clerk and out to our community. I try to get it and I send it to the town clerk and sometimes they don't see it. So our community misses out on the information to join the Zoom meetings for the West River Board, which should be important to them because it represents our students, grades seven through 12. So if somebody could take responsibility to start getting that information to our town clerk maybe a week before the meeting.
I can, I can, I can take responsibility. We send it out usually the Thursday prior to the meeting and we send it out to all the town clerks and all the schools and we can replicate.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Crystal, for bringing it up and thank you for Bill taking care of that. Any other public comment?
Yes, Russ. Yes, you have Russ coming.
Go ahead, Russ. Go ahead, Russ.
I'd, I'd like to bring up the subject of legal representation for school employees. That actions that they might take that are not specified in their performance requirements. If an employee of the school does some activity that is not directly related to their job description, are they entitled to legal defense?
If it pleases the board, that's, that's a good question. Could I be directed to find out from the attorney and answer and then bring it back to the board?
Yes, please do.
Hey, Russ, would you do me a favor and just email me the exact question so I make sure that I'm asking the exact thing to the attorney?
I'd be more than pleased to do so.
Great. Unless there's anything else, we need to move into executive session for the superintendent's evaluation. I don't want to cut any.
You have one more hand. I'm sorry, Ms.
No, no, that's what's, it's just, that's what we're here for. Who's up?
Crystal Corview.
Go ahead, Crystal. Crystal.
So I just have one other question. Without going into detail or discussing it, as we all know, there is a litigation going on involving the vote. And I didn't know if Bill could touch base or give us any information. Like if we sign contracts with the teachers and, you know, the litigation must go a different way, what the town's responsibility would be with the contracts? Not sure if that's a school board question or a private conversation.
I think that it's a valid point to bring up. I think it would be my recommendation to the board that we do not issue contracts until April, that I again could ask our legal representation and investigate that question to inform the board.
Does that sound, I'm not, I don't think we can even discuss litigation, so I'm not going to touch that. Discuss litigation, so I'm not going to touch that.
No, you cannot. I'm just saying I, I will follow up and report back. It'll probably be an executive session.
Great. Thank you, Crystal. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? I, I really, I don't want to cut anybody short, but we have a 14 page superintendent's evaluation to do. But by all means, I'm, I'm not going anywhere. Not going anywhere.
Well, we know that you're concerned about the, the powder or the lotion, so. Crystal, did you forget to put down your hand or do you have another question?
Just forgot.
Okay, just didn't want to, did not want to go into executive session without that opportunity. Okay, so Nikki, you are the host. You are going to pass that off to our good friend Chair. And everybody else is going to.
Okay, just real quick, hold on one second, just before everybody leaves. Time out, time out. We still have another meeting next Thursday, the informational meeting, six o'clock. You should find your Zoom address. It should be on the town website or you can show up here in person, hang out in Sarah's room. So, great, now you're doing your thing.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Beth? Kick everybody out.
We're making a motion to adjourn at 7:20, at 7:18.
Beth, do you want me to make a motion to go into executive session? I've got 7:15, but.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Okay, for personnel issues?
Yes.
Gotcha.
I don't know how to kick people out. Not really good kicking people out.
I'm gonna second.
I'll second.
I'll just leave. Good seeing you all.
Bye, Howie. Thanks. I'll second it, Peter.
Thank you.
Bye, Miss Pina. Bye.